Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance to the American flag and remain standing for our invocation given tonight by Councilor Chamblyss.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we pray. Lord, thank you for allowing us to come before you tonight and just thank you for a country that we can come and we can say our pledge and we can govern ourselves and not be ruled by dictators or others. We just thank you for this divine experiment called self-governance. We ask that you help us and guide us as we deliberate tonight that the things that we do and say would be pleasing in your name and it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chamblyss.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
College Prattville City Council Meeting to Order. Character trait of a man is initiative, recognizing and doing what needs to be done before I am asked to do it. Very good character trait. At this time, we have approval of the minutes, City Council Meeting, October fifteenth, 2013, and a work session, October twenty-first, 2013. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
Is that made?
Have a motion that we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, signified by raising your right hand. And the minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, please come forward to the microphone. Please.
Dr. Jerry Simmons, 141 North Chestnut Street. I just wanted to touch base a little bit on your Resolution Number Two on your regular agenda, not the consent agenda, which is the one to authorize the mayor to negotiate the purchase of some real estate property. Couple of comments that I think you need to be aware of. I did some research on it and looked at property concluding that it was probably adjacent. I sent, by the way, I sent emails out to several of you, but I hadn't heard back. So I did some research and it's probably a property adjacent to one of the Parks and Recs property, which would make it strategically important. But some things you need to be aware of about the property, particularly as it affects zoning. Right now, that property, if it's the one I'm thinking of, is zone residential. And as a result, residential can have public use in a residential zone if it meets the various setback requirements. This particular property doesn't have the side yard setback requirement, so it can't qualify for a public use. Your other option would be, if you were to buy it, would be to convert it to office zone. And then you only have a much less eight-foot side yard setback requirement for office zone. The trade-off, by the way, in doing that rezoning is that I don't know how the neighbors would feel. So if the neighbors opposed it, then we could get into a situation with them contesting and possible legal. So that's just something to consider. So I don't know how the legal situation, obviously, it's very reasonably priced for the square footage and I'm assuming it fits into the strategic plan for the Parks and Recs. But I just wanted to, you know, let you know, there's parts of it also that, from the pictures, and you can go online and look at the pictures, that need renovation. So, and of course, it advertised as is, so whatever renovation would need to be done would need to be factored into it. But I just wanted to let you know that it lacks the thirty-five-yard side yard setback requirement for zoning. Any, I know that was kind of technical, but any questions regarding zoning? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, you have a report?
Yes, sir. But if I might have a point of privilege to start off with?
You may.
Well, with that said, recently, we have had some improvements, some adjustments in our promotion, promotional programs inside the fire department. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Captain Josh Bingham, if he would come forward, Captain Corey Russell, if he would come forward, Sergeant Addison, Sergeant Alfred, Sergeant Miller. These are some of the vets that Prattville has to offer in our fire department. They have gone through a lot of regimental training, a lot of leadership from Chief Brown, and I just want to introduce you to this new bunch. It, they seem to be, I think, probably the, some of the youngest that we've ever had here, and I think they, some of them I know from, from about this high, from playing baseball. They have come a very, very long way. And at this time, I'd like to introduce them, turn the microphone over to Chief Brown, see if he has any comments he'd like to say.
Yeah, just really proud of them. First, I want to thank Lisa and her staff through this process and the fire committee, the new promotional process went extremely well. I think there's some things that we're even going to improve there, but I want to thank the fire committee and Lisa for everything that y'all did towards that. Great, just great bunch of guys, highly educated, well-trained. Two of them, I can remember, I'm telling my age now, coming by the fire station when they were little. And I'm very proud of them, just as my entire department, but this is the up-and-coming generation and they're, they're well-trained, very well-respected, and I can't say enough, enough positive about them and I hope they know that. One of them's on call right now, so he could not be here. I hate to ask, is there any way their family, we can get a quick picture with their family all around y'all?
You may.
If I could. Y'all want to come up?
I do have a question for you. Your comments, Amy, are you telling me that there's a chief in this bunch up here?
You got four chief officers.
I got four chief officers? Okay, well, I guess that's on public record now.
You can ask each one of them which one it's going to be and they'll tell you.
Well, come on down. I was telling some of your family members, it's $10 to get in tonight, but it's 20 to get out. So that was part of it that they, most everybody did not realize.
Court, like I said, you're the eight-year-old I remember and you have gotten, yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give him a hand. Thank you, thank you.
We, as you are very well aware of, we, we did have a promotional freeze in the fire department and after the changes that were made there, this is first round there, we do anticipate the, some promotions in the police department sometime in the very near future. They've also had a promotional freeze in that area too, but that they're moving forward on that, so the new, new testing procedure should be in place in the very near future on that. Earlier, I was, I went to the Elmore, I'm sorry, I went to the Toga County Commission to thank them for being a partner in our, in our A-Trip program for over on County Road Four, and I got shocked by their microphones, so that's the reason why I'm using this cordless one tonight. But with that said, I'd like to go ahead and move along into, into my report here and it's, I want to thank our urban management crews for jumping to help out. Some properties are, that were weeded lots, had been running a little bit behind on getting cut, and the city has saved quite a bit because of that. But as I mentioned earlier, last Monday evening, I did attend the Elmore County Commission meeting and thanked them for being a partner with us and the, and also in that A-Trip program. And the county commission, Toga County Commission meeting is the one I spoke to tonight and as, as we can, as we all know, we're in both the Toga and Elmore County, and so we need a strong partnership there. And one of the main reasons there is actually help build relationships in that, in those areas. As we all know also, Monday is Veterans Day and the traditional wreath laying ceremony will be held at the Toga County Courthouse at 11:00 a.m. in honor of our veterans. Council President Woodbe speaking on behalf of the city as I will be out of town on city business that day. I encourage you all to attend and show appreciation to our veterans there. November tenth through the sixteenth is Military Appreciation Week. We, we will be hanging banners out in front of City Hall on Friday, so that will bring attention to this event all week. And Thursday, November the fourteenth, there will be a joint proclamation signing at, by the River Region Mayors and Military officials, and this will take place at 9:00 a.m. at the Wright Flower Memorial in Montgomery, just over I-65. But councilors, today is the fifth of November. I don't know if that means anything special to any of you guys. It's actually our one-year anniversary of this quadrennial. And I do need to apologize because I was given a key to the city of Prattville whenever I was elected, and this is the key. And rest assured, I checked all the doors here in City of Prattville and it won't open any of them. With that said, that was supposed to be a little funny there, but with that said, the new modern-day mayor, the key to the city is a mayor coin. And I would like to go ahead and pass those out right now, and as I do that, I hope you will accept those, as I do that.
You're starting with seven.
I know, I know. And I'm moving over to five. Then I'm moving to four. And three. And one of the reasons for that is that there's two other ones right over here that have already had one. And I've sort of been working sort of, sort of backwards, went from the newest guys on the council, working back over here to the, to the next one. I will ask you, District Six, Ray Bowles, please, in Latin, on the back of the coin, there's something written, if you'll indulge us, if you can interpret that for us. Council President Wood? Thank you.
It looks like it says, "Vote Mayor Gillespie Forever." Is that right?
No, definitely not.
You sure it doesn't say that? Because it sure looks like it says that.
Well, maybe I didn't give you this key to the city, it doesn't fit anything, but...
Okay. Make Prattville better, one project at a time.
And that's it. That's exactly, is exactly what it says.
I like the first one better, though.
You think so?
Personally, I do, but I was going to say unless you inserted "Vote Bowles" on there. But I like it. It's really good, Mayor, I really appreciate this. I have the old key, but I really like the coin. The coins mean a lot. I appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Well, one of the good things about the coin is that you can put it in your pocket and, and, you know, to me, I pass some out, but it's, on the back of it, it does say dedicated to serve and, and getting to know you guys over the year, you have really made me realize that you are here dedicated to serve and you have made Prattville better, one project at a time. One thing I have realized is communication is very important. Communication is key to success. And at the public work session, I feel that communication flowed very well. I do understand the questions and the concerns brought forth by this legislative body, and I share some of these same concerns with you. Councilor's reorganization plan with options cannot move forward without action by this body. Comprehensive plan will take place. It will take a lot of time. It will take a multiple of work sessions. It will take the due dealings of this body, departments and staff, and only action by this body can bring a plan to fruition for public works. Councilors, please take your time, do your best, and let's make Prattville better together, one project at a time. With that said, I'm open to any and all questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor at this time? Counselor Bowles?
Just one quick question, lay a room at rest. On the side of the interim public works tractor, what does it say on the side of the truck?
Well, we actually don't have an interim. We have somebody with special assignment.
Special assignment. What does it say on the side of the truck?
City of Prattville.
Thank you.
I'm assuming. Yes, sir. Okay, and if I may extend that point of privilege?
Yes. Yeah. We have a guy.
One of them's having a work life, keep all of us looking forward to the site.
This is another one of these baseball young ones that I remember. Very, his family ought to be very, very proud of him. He is going to be, again, possibly one of the new up-and-coming firefighters. I was asked a little bit earlier, you know, was there a chief in the group and, and, because Chief Brown was bragging on the whole group, so some of them, I think everybody said yes. So I don't know exactly, we got exact name or anything, but anyway, congratulations. So look forward to the future of you guys. You have a great family and you're going to make Prattville better, as you already have. Thank you.
Yeah, I went back to the other department, he has a spare minute there, he's asking if there's a chief in the bunch.
You'll get, you'll get one, one picture up here, though?
Can y'all step back a bit into the light? That hit. You ready? Thank you.
I, I can validate, there's been a lot of hard work by a lot of great department heads and employees around here, and it's just, this is, hopefully, we'll see a lot of, lot of up-and-coming people coming through here, and this is just the first of many, I believe. But I'm sorry, are there any other questions, concerns, comments?
Mayor, thank you for the coin. Thank you for the spirit of cooperation as you stated your report. We congratulate those young men and wish them well, and surely all the council persons up here feel the same way. Everyone has worked hard and we applaud all city employees, all city employees. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a report from council and special committees. Counselor Striplin.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
Yes, sir. The building the committee met on October the twenty-ninth, we had two points for discussion. We talked about the Doster Project, which is on Agenda Number Two, which will give the power for the mayor to, to make a bid on that, that project. And Number Two is the Gurney Building, met with Robbie Anderson to move forward with the demolition of that project.
Thank you. Counselor Chamblyss.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir. There will be a Parks and Rec Committee meeting tomorrow at 4:30 at the Doster Center.
Thank you. The Finance Committee did meet Monday week, met for about two and a half hours, discussed certain aspects of the budget, very fruitful, very open, and very good meeting. We all agreed that the city was moving in the right direction financially. We all seemed to agree that we need to make sure that we keep the ship sailing in the proper directions, so we will be slowing down on certain aspects of the budget as we move forward, but we will be cooperating to make sure that everything is done properly and right. With that said, we will move into our agenda.
Yeah, being indulged one more time, just for the, the record, I just want to make certain that anybody realizes that the building Mr. Starnes was talking about was the Gloria Plant Building up on MLK. I just want to make certain that there was no miscommunications along that line. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda. Number one is an ordinance to amend Ordinance Book 2013, page zero-three-four, to prohibit use of compression brakes with the exception of public safety vehicles, emergencies in vehicles with proper noise control. Number two is an ordinance to surplus one vehicle from the fire department. Number three is an ordinance to surplus two vehicles from the police department. Number four is to surplus equipment from the Parks and Recreation Department. And number five is an ordinance to surplus equipment from the wastewater department. We have a motion to place these five items on a consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor that we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor placing these five items on a consent agenda, signified by raising your right hand? And these items have been placed on a consent agenda. Will there be any discussion on any one of these five items? Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the items on a consent agenda, will you signify by raising your right hand? And these five items are adopted. We're moving to our regular agenda. Item number one is a resolution to rescind the public works portion of the 2013-2014 budget. It was held over from October the fifteenth, 2013. This item is already on the floor. It's open for discussion. Counselor Chamblyss.
Thank you, sir. I want to start by thanking the mayor for all the discussion that we've had since the last meeting. We've had several opportunities to get together and have discussions, and just like he said, I believe that communication is key. Communication is key in, in what, in everything that we're doing to keep the city forward. Based on your comments tonight and your commitment, I'll request the council to just simply vote no on this item, and that would remove it from our agenda. And I look forward to continued detailed discussion amongst the council and the mayor before any further action is taken regarding the public works department. Thank you.
You needed to suspend the rules on the consent agenda.
Did we miss that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just go back through it.
We want to finish, can we finish? We will finish this item and then we'll go back to that. Be any more discussion on item number one? All in favor of this resolution, signify by raising your right hand?
Do it now? I'm confused. I'm sorry, you said the consent agenda. I thought it was the consent agenda.
We on Resolution Number One?
I'm sorry, I thought we were back on the consent agenda. Take that back, sorry.
We'll try this again. All in favor of this resolution, signify by raising your right hand? All oppose? And this resolution, veil of seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. McDowell. We will need to retract to suspend the rules on the consent agenda if someone will make a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand? The rules have been suspended. Just to make this proper, we'll go back through the vote. Will be any discussion on this item? No discussion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? And consent agenda has been adopted. We will now go to Resolution Number Two, to authorize the mayor to negotiate terms and conditions to purchase additional property for the Parks and Recreation Department. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville recognizes the importance of providing recreational activities for its citizens of all ages, and whereas the Parks and Recreation Department is in need of additional property to provide recreational activities, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, the mayor is authorized and empowered to negotiate terms and conditions for the purchase of additional city property for the Parks and Recreation Department and will report back to the City Council the results of the same. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor that we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, be any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Number three is a resolution to amend the FY 2014 budget and to authorize the mayor to execute a cable television franchise management service agreement with Local Government Services LLC, a cost not to exceed $11,000. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville desires to regulate and oversee the provision of cable television services, and whereas Local Government Services LLC has available a cable television franchise management service to assist the city in such regulation, and whereas said cable television franchise management service is offered through a joint marketing and service agreement with LGS as an independent contractor of the Alabama League of Municipalities, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the fiscal year 2014 budget surplus is hereby decreased by $3,500 and the fiscal year 2014 budget line item finance department slash miscellaneous contract services is increased by $3,500. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed $11,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Local Government Services LLC, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2014 budget line item finance department slash miscellaneous contract services. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor to execute a cable television franchise management service agreement on behalf of the city in substantially the same form as Appendix A, which is attached to and made a part of this resolution. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor that we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be any discussion on this resolution? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? And this resolution passes also. Resolution Number Four, to authorize the mayor enter into agreement with FBAC for actuarial services at a cost of $5,000. Counselor Chamblyss, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB, sets accounting standards for state and local governments and issue statements set forth, setting forth such standards, whereas GASB Statement 45 requires state and local governments providing other post-employment benefits, OPEB, to account for and report such benefits in accordance with GASB guidelines, and whereas an actuarial valuation is required to comply with GASB Statement 45, and whereas the City of Prattville provides OPEB in the form of retiree participation in the city's health insurance plan, and whereas the city is hereby required to have an actuarial valuation of its OPEB liability in order to comply with the requirements of GASB Statement 45, and whereas Fontanot Benefits and Actuarial Services, FBAC, has the expertise to perform these services at a cost of $5,000, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount of $5,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to FBAC, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from 2014 budget line item finance department accounting. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized and empowered to execute a contract for GASB Statement 45 actuarial valuation services with FBAC. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor that we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, would be any discussion on this resolution? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand? And this resolution is adopted. Resolution Number Five is to enter into an agreement with Sane Associates Incorporated to provide Indian End Services in an amount not to exceed $24,000 net cost to the city not to exceed $4,800 for the resurfacing of Sixth Street, Project Number STPMN-U-R-12. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has identified the need to resurface Sixth Street from US-31 to Lower Kingston Road, and whereas the City of Prattville has entered into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation to have this work performed, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation requires preliminary engineering services for this work, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation has approved Sane Associates Incorporated to perform these duties, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation will reimburse the City of Prattville for 80% of said cost, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes and empowers the mayor to enter into an agreement with Sane Associates Incorporated to perform engineering services to resurface, for resurfacing Sixth Street from US-31 to Lower Kingston Road in an amount not to exceed $24,000, net cost to the city not to exceed $4,800, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2014 budget line item capital project fund slash miscellaneous contract services. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize... does hereby authorize and empower the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and on behalf of the City of Prattville. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor that we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be any discussion on this item? Mayor, is this one the A-trip project? Robbie, is it? Can you come forward for a minute?
This is not one of the A-trip projects. That was the Counter Road Four project and the Traffic Signal project. It's our two A-trip funded. This is our normal MPO allocation that's, uh, scheduled for this year in resurfacing.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussions? All in favor of adoption, please raise your right hand? And this item is adopted. Resolution number six, to release funds for the purchase of one twenty-fourteen Dodge R twenty-five-hundred truck from Ben Atkinson Motors through state contract number T nineteen, one ninety-one L for the Engineering Department at a cost of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. Council Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville is in need of purchasing one twenty-fourteen Dodge R twenty-five-hundred truck for the Engineering Department, and whereas said vehicle is available through state contract number T one nine one L from Ben Atkinson Motors at a cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. And whereas said vehicle is a budgeted expense of the Engineering Department, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in the amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Ben Atkinson Motors, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand and fourteen budget line item Engineering Department slash Capital Outlay. Mr. President, so moved.
Have a motion on the floor that we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Council of Chambers. Be any discussion on this item? All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Item number seven is a resolution to release funds for the purchase of two twenty thirteen Anua Chevrolet Tahoe PPV vehicles from Capital Chevrolet through state contract number T one nine one L for the Fire Department at a cost of fifty-three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Council Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas we, is needed for two, two thousand and thirteen Anua Chevy Tahoe PPV vehicles in the Fire Department, and whereas this vehicles are available through the state contract T one nine one L from Capital Chevrolet at the cost not to exceed twenty-six thousand five hundred ninety dollars each, and whereas said vehicles are budgeted, a budgeted expense for the Fire Department, now therefore be resolved by the City of Prattville, uh, by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in the amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to the Capital Chevrolet, and funds are approved and appropriated from FY two thousand and fourteen budget line item Fire Department Capital Outlay. I so moved.
Have a motion on the floor that we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Be any discussion on this resolution? All in favor of adoption, signified by raising your right hand? And this resolution is adopted. Resolution number eight is to amend the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen budget and to release funds for the purchase of one TJ thirty Bobcat compact tractor loader from Capital Tractor Incorporated through NJPA Purchasing Cooperative Contract number zero six zero three eleven dash CEC for the Urban Management Department at a cost not to exceed forty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, net cost to the city not to exceed nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Council Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for one T six three oh Bobcat compact tractor loader in the Urban Management Department, and whereas said Bobcat tractor loader is available through NJPA Purchasing Cooperative Contract number zero six zero three one one dash CEC from Capital Tractor, Inc., at a cost not to exceed four, forty-four thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars. And whereas the Bobcat tractor loader will assist with recycling operations, and whereas the Alabama Department of Environmental Management will reimburse the City of Prattville twenty-five thousand dollars in recycling grant funds toward the purchase of the Bobcat tractor loader, and whereas said Bobcat tractor loader is a budgeted expense for the Urban Management Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that FY two thousand and fourteen budget line item grant revenue is hereby increased by twenty-five thousand dollars. Budget line item Urban Management Department Capital Outlay is increased by one thousand five hundred dollars, and budget surplus is increased by twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars, net cost to the city not to exceed nineteen thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars, are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Capital Tractor, Inc., and funds are approved and appropriated from FY two thousand and fourteen budget line item Urban Management Department Capital Outlay. Mr. President, so moved.
Have a motion on the floor that we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Be any discussion on this item? All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? And this resolution is adopted. At this time, we have comments from persons present on any item that they would like to discuss. Yes, sir, please come forward.
Hello, everyone on the council. My name's John DeVoe, and I'm the executive director for the Singler Dose Support and Recreation Center, multi-purpose and multicultural fine arts center, and the event coordinator for the two thousand and thirteen Otawa County and Prattville-wide annual observance of World AIDS and HIV Responsible Sex, Health Wellness, and Fitness Awareness Day program, benefit and luncheon, and the support center is located at five ten Vendetta Road. Uh, this program is, uh, sponsored co-equalam with Ward Chapel African Methodist Episcopal Church on Fourth Street Prattville's oldest predominantly American African church. Uh, they've been here since Daniel Pratt was here. And Bethlehem Christian Methodist Episcopal Church on the corner of Sixth and Chestnut Street. I would like to ask the council to support this program in every way, in words and deeds, financially and in kind, and to provide someone either from the mayor and, uh, one of the council persons to give the opening, uh, prayer and meditation and invocation, um, on that program. Um, council, um, county commissioner, the Honorable Kyle Glover, has already accepted invitation to represent the, uh, Tall County Commission on the program by reading a scripture. And the Honorable Eleanor Baloo from the Tall County Board of Education has agreed to represent the Board of Education on their program by giving a scripture, as we're reading a scripture on that program as well. And I would like the City Council to do the same, uh, with whomever you decide to send, but to let me know as soon as possible who that will be, because we are trying to finalize everything before the end of the weekend, no later than November the twentieth, uh, to make allowances for people going out of town for the Thanksgiving holiday. And our goal is to have those programs finalized, typed, and printed no long, later than November the twentieth, to make allowances for those who are going out of town for, uh, the Thanksgiving holiday. But lastly, I do want to note, uh, I was riding in the car with a gentleman sometime ago, and we were, uh, I never would have known, we were talking about World AIDS Day program, and he was a very respected deacon at one of his, one of the local churches here in the City of Prattville, the chairman of the deacon board at that particular church. And he, uh, he told me, so, you know, my son died, I had a son died of AIDS, and they told me that. As well as I know him and his wife, I had no idea, I was not aware of that. And, um, State Representative, our keynote speaker last year was Dr. Pamela Payne Foster, a research and instructor at the University of Alabama, and the author of a book called Is There No Bomb in Black America about AIDS and HIV in the American African community. But Dr. Foster said in her talk last year that our State Representative Laura Hall had lost their son to HIV and AIDS as well. And while they, her family was going through that experience, you know, her son pretty much died in silence too. I mean, the family really didn't talk about what he was dying from, and what he died from, while they were going through that experience. But Representative Laura Hall's, uh, uh, said, uh, said her son made her promise him that after she died, he died, that she would become more involved as relates to AIDS and HIV awareness, responsible sex awareness, and health wellness, and fitness awareness. And she now sponsors, is the founder of and sponsors the City of Huntsville's annual observance. And so I would like the City Council and City of Prattville, many people have died in silence because, particularly in the American African community, because of the negative stigmas associated with the illness. But December the first is the International Day, that this event is observed all over the world, and the same public service announcement that I've given you, uh, is the same one that went to President Obama, is the same one that went to all elected officials for our area on the city, county, state, and federal level, as well as on the international level at the United Nations, to all member and non-member, uh, nations and observing nations at the United Nations, as well as the Internet, International Court of Justice and Equality at the Hague. And so I, uh, would like the, um, council to do whatever you can to support this event in every way, uh, that announcement also saying, one that went to TV, radio, and newspaper worldwide, and whatever you can do to support it, uh, in words and deeds, financially and in kind, and in every other way, as well as with a member of the council or the mayor, uh, rep, uh, giving the opening invocation on that program, uh, would be much appreciated. I've asked, uh, I've provided a copy of the, this letter stating all of that. Uh, I've sent it to each of your email addresses, and I've also provided a copy to the city clerk, Ms. Kathy Dickinson, and asked her to include it in the minutes of today's meeting. But if anyone has any questions?
Thank you.
I'd be glad to answer them.
Senator, Mayor?
Yes, sir, thank you. If you can arrange time to meet with our city attorney, I think he has some information he needs to, uh, pass along to you about this.
Okay, I will, and I did receive his email, and I also, uh, sent him back an email pertaining to that. I'm glad that you brought that up. Uh, you, uh, the city attorney was concerned about calling the program the Otawa County Prattville-wide observance of it. Um, the City of Montgomery has had a Montgomery County and citywide observance of World AIDS and HIV Awareness Day for over twenty years. And this program is the only one that I'm aware of that the City of Prattville has ever had since the support center started doing it over the last two or three years. And, um, um, when I, uh, the, uh, I was concerned about it being accepted in the community because of all of the negative stigmas and stuff associated with AIDS and HIV, HIV and all of that. And I wrote a letter to Senator Sessions and Senator Shelby, asking them about a proclamation and a resolution, providing their support for this event. And they wrote me back and told me that I didn't need one, and that the program doesn't need one, because there, there are proclamations and resolutions that already exist, and they are standing proclamations, and they are standing resolutions from one year to the next, and there was no need to do, uh, another one. I would appreciate it if the, uh, mayor and the council would give this program the same support that you give the National Day of Prayer Service and all other programs of equal stature. In fact, I've really pretty much just duplicated what it's doing here in the city usually with the National Day of Prayer Service. But this is the International Observance, whatever support that you give other programs of equal stature, in words and deeds, financially and kind, and every other way, I'd appreciate if you would give them, uh, to this one as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on any item? Mayor, you have any other report? Council Striplin?
Yes, sir.
Council Brown?
Yes, sir.
Council Sterns?
Yes, sir.
Council of Chambers?
Yes, sir.
Council Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Council Boone?
Yes, sir.
Thank everyone for coming tonight. Next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, at six P.M. Remember Veterans Day, um, Monday, the eleventh. The program is at eleven A.M. Program is at eleven A.M. We look forward to seeing you there. With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? We are adjourned.